Everyone, thanks for being here today and welcome to the regular meeting of council for Monday, January 27th, 2025. It is held in the council committee room or in the chambers. And also, just as a reminder, the meeting webinars are recorded and published on the city's YouTube site at trail.ca/youtube. The first item on the agenda is called to order. A second item is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a mover? Thank you, Councillor Martin and Councillor Hudson, all those in favor. Thank you, that was Carrie. The next item is a resolution to resolve into the committee of the whole. And council will now resolve itself in the committee of the whole. Is there a mover, please? Councillor Wilson and Benson, all those in favor? That was Carrie, thank you. And we have some departmental verbal updates today. And the first one on the agenda is Public Works and the Utilities Manager, Craig Spears.
Hello, everybody. Today, I'm just going to report similarly to last time. I'll give you a few rundown on what we've run into. We've only had one water main break today, which is not too bad. That was in Roadage, the little lane in between. So we're going to redo that in-house this summer. It's kind of a hotspot for breaks. So we're going to take care of it. It's about 100 years old, taking a little bit more.
We didn't take care of that as part of the...
No, that was in the way they did the big main render of it. That wasn't in the scope. Yeah. And I'll give you a few statistics again of what we maintain, just for your interest. We look after 1,000, 1,007 sanitary sewer manholes. That's kind of our inventory within the city. 779 storm manholes. 1,400 catch basins. 1,353 streetlights and traffic lights are included in those. 317 fire hydrants. 82.6 kilometers of water main. I don't have the exact number for sewer main, but it's very close to water main. It's within about four kilometers, I believe. Yeah, they're just little facts for you. People like to know what we do, but that's a pretty big inventory left, so what we maintain. Some of the work today, we're working on the annual water report. Jen Dowstec, she's one of our water treatment plant operators. She's been busy revamping it. It's going to be a little more interactive. It's going to have barcodes on it. You can see with your, you know, picture under your phone. And it'll link you to certain sites if you want information about land in the water system or any kind of stuff.
Cool.
Yeah, so we're excited to see how that looks. I did have a good preview of it. The main focus for us right now, we're like, so we don't have a lot of emergency repairs, which is good. We're looking at sanitary sewer and storm manhole inspections. So we're going along, going around, inspecting all these things, making a work list for the summer, spring and summer. That involves camera work, just ensuring that they're in good shape. Sewer line inspections and we're clearing tons of routes. We're just busy going to all the hotspots and we're clearing out that and keeping them going. Also brush, lots of brush around our reservoirs and all the road access roads. We've been busy clearing that out as well. Yeah, that's about it for now. That's our main focus. It's a pretty big entertainment.
Great, thank you, Craig. But any questions or comments?
Councillor Benson? Might be a silly question, but you talked about the streetlights. Does anyone else notice that they look purple?
Yes, oh, well, that's a good question. They are purple.
Oh, okay.
They are failing, they're relatively new, but they're on warranty. So we receive, we went through switching as soon as we can. Yeah.
They're lovely, but I was just...
They do eventually, the end where it goes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
They had a bad batch.
Okay.
They were about 300 and it's probably why it's so we've...
Oh.
They're actually in court right now, but yeah. All LEDs are purple, just so you guys know, and it's the coating that makes them a different color. So that coating has failed, so they're reverting back to their original purple colors.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry, just a question.
Sure.
And you said brush clearing around all of your infrastructure.
Yep.
What happens with the brush that is not necessarily around infrastructure? So that might be more roads and grounds related as opposed to utility, but maintaining for fire and visual, you know, seeing around corners, et cetera. So what is there a plan, what plans are that to maintain it? And I mean, maybe it's a sort of, it might not be a few questions, it might be something else.
It's all good, it's all intertwined. Yeah, we look at the drainage ditch as we brush those as well. And you're right, any corners that we can get to. Yeah, that's certainly a part of the risk.
Visibility, okay, thanks.
Okay, if there's no other questions, thank you, Craig, for being here today. If you want, you can stay and continue to be a part of the meeting or, okay. The next item we have is the grounds and road manager, Josh Conchi. Welcome.
Yeah, so good afternoon, Mayor Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. The only significant snowfall date was on December 18th, which brought approximately five inches of extremely heavy snow, which in turn activated a downtown snow removal that night. The wet snow conditions brought substantial trees and branches down throughout the entire city. That ate up probably two weeks of cleanup, brought us right to basically the end of December. We did probably 90% of it, but I had to bring in Glacier contractor as well because some of the stuff was out of our scope of work. So big cleanup after the storm. Recent projects and ongoing work right now, just in the lack of snow. The new Public Works block cell for the sweeper material, we did middle of December. The new garbage cans, new garbage receptacles were installed downtown. So we've got rid of all the old aggregate and put in the new steel. Some of them are graphics, some of them aren't, but they're all lockable now. So that's hopefully going to rectify the issues we've been having with them not getting emptied and bags being stolen. So they're all out, they're all deployed. They've got garbage only stickers on them to avoid, well, try to avoid confusion. But they're out there and I'm working with GFL on a little bit better of a system for pickup. Because about middle of December, we, for a couple of weeks there, was getting pretty bad downtown, just with stuff missed. So those are out. The tech fire smart project at the water treatment plant, that was about two weeks of limbing, brushing and remediating the surrounding area around the compound, which touches on what you were asking. All the underbrush was taken out. We limbed halfway up the trees and down just to remove all the fire fuel that surrounds the water treatment pipe. So that was two weeks up there. As far as I know, we're pretty much wrapped up. I think Brian Maloney is, I can't remember the gal's name that was running it, but she's hoping to come back and get a visual of what's there and if she still wants to move ahead. But it looks great up there. Dangerous tree limb removal. We've done lower Sunnydale Park, the Silker parking lot above the mural there. That was, that had some three or four really bad, dangerous hanging trees over the parking lot, which have all been removed. Rosanath Park and Centennial Park ongoing. Draining, ditching, drainage and retaining wall improvements. The S L, the dump hill, mural, mural heights retaining wall and Old Winnie Road retaining wall. Just scratching the dirt behind so that when the stuff's left down the bank, it's got a bit of a reprieve there instead of spilling out onto the road. And then the T N C, this is ongoing, the storage room and bathroom rental. We've got crew members down there right now with that, helping John Harper, kids rake, puck shields. And just newly added today, respirator cubby install at both entrances to the plant room. So yeah, that's kind of what we've got on the docket right now. Just trying to catch up in the parks and again, with some of the leaves that we can do when they're not frozen in the lack of snow that we have right now. So yeah, happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. Thank you, thanks for that report. Any questions? Well, I just want to say I love the new garbage cans. I just think it makes such a difference downtown. It just cleans it up and it gives that little bit of history. And yeah, the pictures on them are really neat. And you can just tell that they're so much more effective. You know, they're people proof, bear proof, animal proof, you know? I think they look great. And I don't know if you see me almost every day at the water tower walking my dog. So I noticed the work that you were doing up there and it looks really, really good. Those trees that were starting to come onto the water tower looked very, very dangerous. But what a, you know, great opportunity to get it cleaned up and get it ready for the summer. But it looks really good, really good.
Yeah, we are hoping that they might want to push it like beyond the compound towards the hill coming up.
Yeah.
Because there's a whole bunch of underbrush there too that needs to be taken care of, so.
Yeah. Okay, that was my only comments that I had, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to engineering and we have the manager of engineering and projects here, Ben Russell Jones.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Thanks for having me today. It was further down on my list, but I guess I'll carry on with that item, goes along with what Josh was speaking to. With the lack of snow in Trail, we took advantage of that and we hired a couple of contractors to do some tree removals along Gyro Park, Walkway, around the concession area. If you've noticed, seven of the large hardwood trees that were dangerous dropping limbs over the past few years were removed and we're in the process of stump grinding those so that we can landscape that area and look at future planting in that area. And then currently underway in Popple Park and moving to Bliski Park, we're removing another swath of trees that have kind of met end of life and are dropping limbs. So focusing on areas where people are walking, the public is interacting, your children are playing. So that's one of the large projects underway. On Daniel Street, we reached substantial completion with that project. I don't know if anyone's had an opportunity to kind of go up and tour the area, but the railing is installed now along retaining wall. It looks quite good. That being said, we have another winter, so then really to test things out. So I expect there will be some work that's done in the spring, once the residents have had a chance to speed up about how it's working for them. As far as the NG 911, we're continuing to resolve and correct a lot of issues we have around addressing. That's going to be ongoing as long as the digital road atlas updating addresses. So we're expecting, we're hoping to have that done sometime around the end of March. Up on Daniel Street as well, the playground was installed in November, December. That project is complete. We have a few site furnishings that we're going to put in in the springtime with some money that we had left over. So swimming benches, garbage cans, things like that, just to tidy it up. And that'll tie into the Queen Street or Queen Elizabeth Park improvements that we did last year. And then moving on to 900 Spokane and 901 Helena, we're currently facilitating the removal of some items that have been left behind by the previous tenants. And working with an engineering consultant to develop some demolition drawings and site material plans. Once I have those, I'm anticipating an RFP sometime early to mid-March. And I'm kind of trying to time all that to avoid any conflicts with Silver City Day festivities downtown. So yeah. Some other, some other smaller things we have going on, just ongoing updates and corrections, improvements to our G I S mapping system. We're always trying to make that better to get it up to the crews so they can use it to the best ability. And working with the regional district to host and the G I S system on their web map. So they currently host our zoning data, ortho imagery and parcel information. And when we're complete, we'll have our road network and addresses updated on there as well. That's all I have for today. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I'm just wondering, as I hear the trees are getting browned and removed, but is there a timeline for doing some of that?
Well, hopefully there's going to be some sort of master plan that we come out as far as what that space looks like moving forward. But I don't want to rush into saying that we're planting right away in the spring. I think right now the space looks really good and we should look at what the greater plan is for that park moving forward before we just put trees in the ground.
Thank you. Any other questions from councils or Ben? Okay, thanks, Ben. Parks and Recreation, we have the Facility Maintenance Manager, Brendan Oglo.
Mayor Council, thank you for having me here today. So we currently have some projects on the go. We're working with Color Engineering to finalize our issue for tender drawings and specifications for our heat recovery project. That tender is expected to go public sometime mid-February. We've been working with an automation contractor, which will create some large scale data logging of city mechanical equipment, both at the Riverfront Center and T M C. And this will help with long-term projections for troubleshooting and preventative maintenance as well as hopefully reducing contractor callouts. Recently, we've had some issues at the leader center regarding pool temperatures. So our staff performed some extensive troubleshooting to determine the root cause of this, which was related to heat exchange or fouling. That's getting the boiler heat to the pools. So we've been working with suppliers and to hopefully plan to remedy the situation, both in the short and long term. And staff right now are monitoring the systems and kind of adjusting on as needed basis. And so we have a plan to address this at our annual shutdown as well as create a short-term plan. We have to perform some work. On the training front, we're going to be bringing in a first aid contractor to train the arena staff. This was going to, this is so that we can meet the new worksite requirements for first aid at our site. As well as we, that same automation contractor as a in-house course. So we're going to be putting our staff through them to allow our staff just have a better understanding of the systems at both at the T M C and at the Riverfront Center. On our staffing side, we have one new staff member who started today. This is a temporary position to fill a vacancy for parental leave. And we are currently in the interview process to hire another casual at the T M C to help with work. That concludes my report.
Okay.
If there's any questions?
Any questions from council? Okay. Thank you, Brendan. Onto Parks and Recreation Manager, Gabby.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. So the aquatic program coordinator has progressed in her new role and is coming up to speed on further tasks through training. Our Parks and Rec and Men Clerk has returned after an extended leave. And the employee covering her leave will transition to an additional part-time cashier. We really appreciate her stepping in to assist the operation during that leave. We also now have two full-time senior lifeguards. This will be the first time we've had full supervisory staff in three years. So it's pretty exciting. We're gearing up for the spring/summer leisure guide. And it's expected to be out mid-March and program registration is scheduled for March 18th and 20th. We currently have 58 people in private swimming lessons. And we're currently running two advanced lifeguarding courses, which is bronze cross and swim instructor. Registration for aquafit and swimming lessons has been excellent, really dizzy, lots of people. We have a total of 160 kids registered in swimming lessons and there is 149 registered for aquafit. And that's not including drop-ins.
Wow.
And we've also just added five new swim classes due to large wait lists for swimming lessons. And we just started a senior swim club. So every Wednesday from two to three, seniors can pay a drop-in and there's a stroke correction from one of our staff available. And that's about it for this month.
Well, that's great. 149 for aquafit?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Does the mayor have a standing reservation?
She does.
You should ask. Okay, any questions or comments for Gabby? That's great. All of you, thank you so much for being a part of our community and the work that you do. And again, you're welcome to stay and be a part of the meeting or we understand if you have to go as well. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Gabby.
We will continue on, I think, on the five years gap reports. We have the monthly reports before you, report on invoices paid for December. Is there someone that can move that? Thank you very much, Councillor Wilson and Councillor Martin. Just need to move that?
Yes, thank you.
And we also have the report on the building department report for August to December. Now, it is extra long, 21 pages. But that's because they didn't have the staff to provide the reports every year. So in case anybody else was wanting, Councillor Benson, thank you. Is there a secondary, Councillor Castle? Right, okay. The recommendation is to consider ourselves to receive the information. Thank you. Report on invoices paid for the municipal services and the building department reports. So let's do that. Is there someone to move that, please? Thank you, Councillor Wilson. We do have the Comico Arena Refrigerated Floor Replacement. Sorry, what order we just sent a call, but everyone in favor for that? Oh, sorry, everyone in favor for those two reports? And that was Carrie, thank you. Okay, on to the Comico Arena Refrigerated Floor Replacement Award. And we do have a report from the acting director, Dave Morgan. I'll let you do your presentation.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you.
Mr. Council, thank you for having me today. So I am here to speak to the Comico Arena Refrigerated Floor Replacements and I'm looking for a reward to Reward Construction Limited. And also the supply installation of the dashboard infrastructure to Atlantica Sport Systems. Both have associated costing with the recommendation. Little background, so the Memorial Center did celebrate its 75th year in 2024. And less known is the last refrigerated floor replacement for that facility for the Comico Arena was 1969, which puts it at 56 years of service. And those refrigerated floors, their end of life is usually 25 to 30. So we have been living on borrowed time with that. And I noted in the report, last year, since I was on, we did have six prime weeks in startup. And thankfully, we were able to start up early enough that it didn't affect any ICE users, primarily our home of Champions Hockey School, as we try and get ICE ready for them early in August. So while it's a little bit easier when ICE isn't in and we have startup, this becomes a greater concern during ICE season. If we do have continued prime weeks. Further to that, as part of discussions with the Trail Smoke Eaters and facility use agreement, as part of that agreement, we looked at updating the concrete floor, the dashboards and the glass as part of that five-year facility agreement. And with that, we were able to work with a consultant and get a design for the refrigerated floor as well as a design and specifications for the dashboards. We went to invitation to tender for the refrigerated floor and associated mechanical equipment, concrete and construction and demolition of those items. We received two tenders, two tenders, two valid tenders. Both did attend our non-mandatory site meeting. And in review of those tenders and in consultation with our consultants, this staff is recommending Reward Construction, which is hired of the two contractors. However, within those tender specifications, we did ask for minimum requirements on past construction and references. And in your package, you will note that Reward has numerous examples of construction. And this is what they are specifically doing out in the field is just refrigerated floor construction. So we feel quite confident that they are an appropriate contractor to move forward with. Just a couple of other things to highlight is in their construction schedule, we are looking at October 13th. That is a September 30th date for their scope, but then a two-week window for city staff to create ICE. So that is going into usual ICE user groups. So we have to be cognizant of time. And as such, staff is asking that this be brought forward both in the committee of the whole and the regular agenda. While there is some plus or minus to the construction start dates, because it is based on the Trail Smoke Eaters' success. And staff used the litmus test of two rounds of playoffs as our kind of rough estimate. But that could go either way. And Reward has made themselves ready to move into site as soon as possible. However, staff is requesting this kind of expedited schedule for procurement. There is a number of items that will require lead times. There is mechanical pump infrastructure. The dashboards are a major one and we just don't want to create any hindrance to that schedule once they are going. And so we just feel that we don't want to be the hindrance in this regard. And to that, I guess we're building these together for just over $2.6 million for a total project. And financially considering, we have received a donation from Murphy's, Murphy Family Foundation of a million US dollars towards the project. Is there any questions?
Councillor Benson? Thank you, through the chair. Thanks, Dave, for the report. Curious on the, just because there's like a, almost a $200,000 difference in the two quotes. It says in your report that the other one didn't provide any similar projects with their bid. Did we follow, like, they just didn't, they don't have any or they didn't?
Yes, through the chair. Thank you for the question, Councillor Benson. I did follow up with both contractors and the one in our construction base of this column don't have any. This would have been their first refrigerated floor project. And so while they are agreed from their tender, they have numerous examples of, you know, condominium buildings, apartment complexes, large construction, nothing dedicated to this kind of construction, which just leaves a little bit too much gray inside to, especially with such tight time constraint from the backend.
Okay, and then just want to follow up through the chair. Which groups are most affected by the pushing out of the date to potentially October 15th? And what has their feedback been?
Yes, through the chair, thank you. Yeah, so the major one is the Trail Smoke Eaters. But not to discredit them, minor hockey is also going to be affected. And then there's, you know, figure skating, public skating. We have been in contact very early in the stage with home or Champions Hockey School, because this would affect them regardless of timeline. Their hockey school is in early August. So regardless of plus or minus on the backend of the schedule, they will not be hosting their hockey school at our facility. So they were one that we reached out to right away. The other groups have been made aware, similar to that, sorry, is the GL Pro.
Oh, of course, yeah.
Yeah, so they are also one that is just absolutely affected by it and can be moved back and forth. Those are two that we've been in discussion with there. But in terms of user groups in the September, October schedule, it is the Trail Smoke Eaters, it is minor hockey. Both have been made aware. We haven't, until this is fully executed after today's meeting and council approval, then we'll start really discussing the tentative schedule. And we did reach out to the Smoke Eaters and just kind of let them know what kind of thought is. Therefore, understanding that there's not much we can help in this regard. We're starting it as early as we can. And, you know, if it, unfortunately, if they are out earlier, then we can start earlier, but it does push them back. So yeah, therefore, and they understand that. They've been working with the league in the sense that they have to push home games for a number of times and have to look for a practice phase. And we can offer the kids rake once the heat recovery project gets to a certain point as well. But we don't have a timeline on that as of yet.
Thanks.
Thanks, through the chair. Yeah, just thanks for that, just reward. It is important and we're dealing with something that hasn't done within 56 years. And then we're combining it with the recovery of the project. So again, pretty special that we're able to time all this together and hopefully it all works out very well. But also with having the kids rake updated last year, I think it really will help us. But also with having the kids bring updated last year, it really will help us. As long as the heating recovery project goes well, we can help facilitate, you know, good ICE users for. With the fact that they're out on the Comico Arena. But as long as the ICE plan is working properly, then we've got no issue with the kids ranking. We'll be able to facilitate as many as people as possible inside that arena. Yeah, and I think going forward, this is the most important pieces is, I think, the idea that we may be able to have ICE almost all year round. Doesn't be unique for this area.
Chair, Council Hanson, go ahead. I do have a question.
Yeah, no, thank you. I really appreciate, you know, the background and that Reward put in all of the places they've done, I mean, the Rogers Arena. They've done some pretty significant work and I think comparatively to that AMR that's never done it before. And you just avoid the potential problems and delays and inexperience, which makes sense in your evaluation of them.
Yes.
I just want to understand, so it's looking like it's going to be over budget. Where were we at with the kids rink? Was that not over budget as well? Okay, and this is not the same company?
Not the same company, well, shouldn't say not the same company, same company, but different circumstances. That council should have been made aware of the fact that we had a challenge and they were not, or it was staff. So through that one, there was actually change orders through the project that weren't communicated out. And those were structural based, so it was kind of twofold where it wasn't captured in the initial design. Which is okay, because they, they shifted that entire rink. And so within the project, they had to get engineered design work done, plus a change order, which added to the complexity of it, so, yeah.
And so are we with this, what we have here, are we getting some sort of guarantee from Reward that all of that new diligence has been done? So there won't be those additional structural engineer, you know, those extra costs or whatever?
Yeah, so, and thankfully, we can learn from past projects. But in this one, we did spend a little bit extra money on the early stages in design. And we had a structural consultant provide drawings for that. We had an electrical consultant provide drawings for that. And then our main proponents consultant does mechanical and refrigeration. So between all three, we, all facets of the construction have been kind of taken care of at the front end. And then barring that, any unforeseen circumstances that add a great deal would come to council for their consideration.
Thank you. Okay, Council Benson, you have a question?
Just through the chair, you also talked about quality control oversight throughout the project. Any idea what, what we'd be looking at in terms of cost for that?
Yes, through the chair, thank you. So again, with those three separate consultants, all have made. Part of their original proposals to the city. Site inspections at various times throughout, part of their, their work. The, the biggest one would be from Pollard, I can't remember off the top of my head. But it, it was in the realm where that was going to be carried over from the design works of this year. Because they're, they had their full proposal, but because it's split into design and construction management, it does split our fiscal year. So that'll be carried over.
Okay, great, thanks. Council Martin.
Thank you through the chair. Good information, Dave, thanks so much. I may have read it, but missed it, is the arena, are in lose any seats? Or is the arena sized, the arena floor, are going to remain the same, is that changing?
Yes, yes, so through the chair, thank you, Council Martin. So we are not losing any size and we are improving the corner radius. What we have there now is not really standard, so they're actually too steep in the corners. So they will be eased out, but in doing so, the actual new boards will be pulled in. So instead of coming into the bleachers and kind of affecting that, we will actually be having to infill a little bit. We don't know exactly until that's done, what that really looks like in its entirety. But again, that was part of the structural engineers requirements, they provided drawings to what that looks like and what are the requirements? So that it matches up and, and we have that, but it's actually coming in and not going out into the seating area. And the actual full extent of the size of the arena will be at or at very close to NHL specifications.
Okay.
Okay, I do have a question for Mr. McClure. Are you comfortable, based on what we went through with the kids rink? We are over budget by a hundred and twenty five thousand. Are you comfortable with that moving forward or?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the differences that we have to remember is that when we're looking at this project, we put that as a placeholder. Because we were in twenty twenty four, we put that placeholder in twenty twenty five, awaiting whatever response that we receive from those that are bidding on these projects. I know that we've got some carry forward funded money, I mentioned that in my notes, that we've got some, some projects this year that came in under budget. So I can say automatically that goes towards, is in the same vein as this project. And I just believe overall that gap difference as we finish up budget on the capital side, I'm very comfortable that. If that means something else needs to get pushed off a year, a smaller project, the gap is about any fifty seven hundred thousand dollars that I didn't have money for. And again, this is all predicated on the fact that everything goes well and everything. We open this up and it doesn't have, oh my goodness, we've got something below. Again, we would bring that to council, I know that Mr. Redd is fully aware that if we have any change orders like that, then we'll be bringing that to council to move, before we move forward. So I'm comfortable with where we're at and where we are financially with this project. I mean, to have something at two point five and to come in at two point six a year, you know, with everything that's going on with projects, I'm comfortable. And again, we're paying, I would say, we're paying for some expertise here. So who knows what comes out on that side of, you know, that's where you're really leaning on. If they do run into something that they've seen it before and they don't have a handle. I wasn't aware actually that we would be changing the boards, which is quite fascinating to hear that as well. That there's those slight changes and variations that actually made it NHL, that it would be that complete. But I would have thought that it already was, and so it's interesting to find it, but it had some slight deviation, so, yeah, that was good news to hear.
And one other quick question, sorry David for keeping you, but. So this construction company sounds like they're very committed to this project. Do you have any concerns that it could be delayed? Or I know you can't see a crystal ball, but, or into a crystal ball, but, you know, my concern is that we have the B C Winter Games coming up. Right after the end of the new year and, you know, I just don't know if we can, you know. Hold the small theaters off again after, because we, we do have to for the B C Winter Games, right? Yeah, so I don't know if you see any conflict, there are any previous issues that might delay it, but.
No, thank you, your worship, I appreciate the question. I think in terms of, in going through the tender and, you know, staff even asked for a more aggressive schedule. And. Reward was realistic in their expectations and requested that September thirtieth date. Because they have, they know our facility and they also know that kind of construction. So they didn't want to promise something that was outside of their realm of realistic timelines. So I think, I, I feel quite, quite confident that they can meet those, those scope, barring anything unforeseen. And again, speaking to that, you know, we're trying to think of everything ahead of schedule and, and learning from past practices or past projects. And, you know, we have been in tech, in contact with tech resources, because there is a chance. Based off of the kids ring project that there will be slag or other materials beneath there. So rather than, you know, we've, we've brought them into the discussion, so hopefully that material, if tested and materializes, it can just be brought right to tech right away. And there's no delay in that, so that's not another item we're trying to get ahead of. Similar with, you know, just bringing on consultants that can get ahead of issues before they become an issue.
Great, okay, if there's no more questions? Thank you again for being here, it's a very exciting project for the Memorial Center. So I'm excited to see what it's going to look like when it's done.
Yes, it's going to be exciting.
So we'll move on to B, the Comico Arena Refrigeration Floor Replacement Award. The recommendation before council to consider and resolve is that council approved the award at the Comico Arena Refrigeration. Refrigerated Floor Replacement Contract to Reward Construction Limited with the base price of one million eight hundred ninety four thousand dollars. Plus all applicable taxes, fees and charges. And further to that, that council award the supply and installation of the associated dashboard infrastructure. To Athletica Sport Systems Incorporated with a base price of seven hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars. Plus all applicable taxes, fees and charges. Is there someone to move that? Council Wilson, thank you. All those in favor? That was Carrie, thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Three hundred and ninety four days to go.
Okay, so item C is the application for the redevelopment of seventeen twenty four Grotage Avenue, the strata conversion. And we have a report from the manager of Legislative Services regarding a complex proposal to redevelop the property at seventeen twenty four Grotage Avenue.
Thank you, your worship, through the chair. The property owner of seventeen twenty four Grotage, the former Grotage Avenue rooming house, is seeking a means to redevelop the property into four row houses. The matter is before you today to review this rather complex proposal, given the existing structure on that property. Staff is seeking council's support for the redevelopment as proposed in principle. As stated, the applicants Gordon and Marion Fisher have gutted the former fourteen room, a unit rooming house, removed asbestos and the lead paint. And invested in a new roof. They are proposing to develop four side by side row, row homes and a small one bedroom home that is also located on the property will remain as legal non conforming. The existing structure is largely non compliant with the zoning bylaw and will require future rezoning and a development variance permit for setbacks, side yards, parking and density. In consultation with the city's planning consultant, it was recommended that the first step in the redevelopment would to bring the matter before council to review a partial. Application for a strata conversion as a first step. With us today is Katie Walsh of W S P, who is assisting the city with the review process. Katie's going to just briefly outline the recommendations contained within the report and welcome, answer any questions that council may have. Welcome, Katie.
Hi, everyone, thanks, thanks for having me. So that was a great summary, Sandy. I guess I can sort of quickly go through what's in the report there. But ultimately, what you have before you is a proposal to redevelop the, the building that's at seventeen twenty five Grotage Ave. Into the four row houses. So what you would be looking at is a reduction in what was previously provided in housing of fourteen units plus a house, down to four units plus a house. So one way to look at it is that it's, it's sort of a reduction in the ultimate amount of housing provision that's possible on the site. However, it is at the same time, an increase of what's available there. So because it doesn't comply with the zoning bylaw and because what's proposed is to have. Row houses and potentially rent them out or, or sell them. What we thought might be the best approach and for sort of a first introduction for council to consider it. Is to look at a strata stratification of the site. This would allow the, the applicant to then potentially sell the individual lots or rent some of them out or all of them out. As sort of need or demand would dictate, so it leaves a bit of flexibility there. So what we're suggesting for a first step to, to this proposal, given it's, you know, not really compliant with any zone. Is to look at considering the stratification. I believe section three point, three point four is where we've sort of outlined the potential review process overall. So if this were to follow through, if it's something that council feels is generally supportive of, this is what we, we propose to be done. So the first thing would be to take the proposal to council for a strata application review. And we called it a, a partial application because it's not technically a complete application as per council's guidelines for strata review. But there is the site plan provided, they did fill out the application form. But as it's not compliant with the zoning bylaw and so on, we couldn't reasonably call it a full, complete application. So it's a bit like preempting that first stage of like allowing council to give it a, a. I guess approval in principle as per your guidelines. So, so it's more like considering the application anyway. And then essentially declining the application because it doesn't to a T fit, fit the box. But saying, you know, decline until such a time as the applicant can fulfill these conditions. And so those would be having it rezoned so that it is compliant and it would be a spot rezoning. The variance being met and so on. So I'll walk through here, so the first council meeting would be the strata application review. Then if, if that's granted, then council meeting number two would happen while the opponent goes off and meets the conditions. They'd come forward with the rezoning application, that's where we'd get into some more details about what that rezoning would entail. So you'd be looking at some changes in density and in the use and also some very, the variance application as well. The variance would require a public hearing. The rezoning would not require a public hearing because it's a housing question. And with the new changes that the government brought in last year, you're no longer required to have, or I even think permitted to have a public hearing around a rezoning. That's sort of housing related, so, so that would be, wouldn't be a part of the steps. Then a third council meeting would be seeking final approval from council for that strata application. So assuming the proponent goes off and meets all of those conditions that council would impose. Come back and show that they're done, then you would be able to approve that strata application. So it would still be a, a second chance for council to look at it and review it. If that happens, then the applicant would take their strata and register it with the land titles office. And you'd have a fourth council meeting where you would adopt the rezoning. And then, then the, the variance could be issued and then they'd go off with the building permit. So there are a few ways this could be done, but I think this is probably the best way. So you have a lot of points, touch points with council, so you can see exactly how the application is progressing. And make sure that you have those conditions in place that you'd like to see to ensure it's the best possible proposal that you can have in the area. So I suppose I, I'm happy to try and answer any questions that you might have around this.
Council Benson, thanks Katie, hi.
Hi.
Question, in the. I guess in the motion, it states the, it states the kind of the, the items that the property owners would need to attend to. And then it says any other matters council considers necessary. What other things should we consider?
Well, in previous, my limited exposure to previous strata applications, there have been things like health. And safety related inspections, a medical officer of health, I believe, was involved in one previously. Or if there's some specific issue that council has, has brought up in previous applications that you'd like to impose, it's really just. An option for you to have that there to discuss. It, it's not, I don't, I myself don't think there's anything you'd need to put in place right now. But if there's something, just, it's just a placeholder in case there's something that maybe you've forgotten there.
Thank you.
Councilor, hi Katie.
Hi.
Thanks, thanks, thanks so much for your oversight on this. And as we've been working through O C P, you know, this really wraps around a lot of the conversations about enhancing our downtown core. And making our downtown core more, more people friendly, more housing, more people down in our downtown. Now, I did want just to get your opinion here on the, I see that the tenant was planning on leaving anyway. the, I see that the tenant was planning on leaving anyways, but it looks like that house would stay as legal non-conforming, so they could continue to rent that house out in their application?
Yeah, that's right. Exactly. So um, I wasn't sure what was happening with the tenants, but I I hear that that is likely what's to happen. So perhaps consultation with the tenants is not required, and um if they're going to be moving out anyway, you'd still have that house that would likely remain a rental, uh as I understand it. It is quite small. Um, would likely remain a rental in perpetuity, and they don't have plans, I believe, to make any changes to that one. So.
Okay, no, that's that's great to me. Um, I, yeah, thank you for that, and I appreciate just um with the uh staff report with your concentration on this. It's very thorough and um it looks to be, you know, it's perfect for alongside where the, you know, redevelopment has already happened in Grotage and aligning, you know, with the goals for encouraging infill housing and the vibrancy of our downtown core. Um, and it's really, you know, a testament to the efforts um of being able to, you know, create that private investment um that's kind of gonna set the precedent for future downtown redevelopment. So um I'm very happy to see that.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments before we move to the recommendation? Okay, having seen none, I'm excited to um uh see this happening. If it, you know, if it's something that does come forward, we know that housing is desperately needed, and this is a really diverse way of getting some housing in downtown Trail. Um, you know, uh, we should be grateful that the fishes have, the fishers have been a very you know, um committed to building something down there. So I I I'm looking forward to see uh where this project goes in the in the end here. Uh, you know, we have to remember that it's also gonna revitalize down there as well, and it's part of the settlement phase almost of the revitalization down there. So, okay. Um, I, before saying any more than I have to, I will move ahead with the recommendation. And the uh first recommendation is that council express its support for the redevelopment proposal in principle. And I need a mover for that, please. Counselor Martin and Counselor Benson, thank you. All those in favor? That was carried. Uh, the second one is that council refuse to approve the strata fund until the following conditions are met. And the first one is the applicant provide a complete strata application to council within one year, which includes the following. Uh, confirmation of consultation with the tenants of the house on the property. A proposal for relocation of the tenants of the house on the property. A building report from a professional engineer or architect. Confirmation of completion of work required to bring the property into compliance with the B C Building Code and the municipal bylaws to the satisfaction of relevant authorities and that any other matters council considers necessary. The applicant applied for a spot rezoning to ensure compliances with the zoning bylaw. So someone to move that, please. Counselor Benson? And uh, all those in favor? That was Carrie. Thank you. Okay. Thanks, Katie.
Thanks very much. Great night.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the LC AP Spending Deadline Proposal. And I will pass this uh report on to Mr. McQuaid.
Lead me here, Jones. So from uh my report, uh you'll see a couple of things uh that happened. Uh, one, uh, the province decided to uh sort of change some of the rules that they've had on some of their their funding sources, uh which isn't a bad thing, but I think well, that's kind of been a place where we didn't have any projects in the pipeline currently uh for the monies that we had had from previous years. And um, and so in looking at it and having the the strict deadline that they had at the time when they sent out the information saying you had to spend it by, we did kind of convenience and and in conversation and communication with the ministry that that is responsible for the um, the funding for their local government climate action program and said, okay, so do electric vehicles, and they said absolutely, and any sort of charging infrastructure that we have. And so when staff looked at it, we had noted in our plan for the fleet that we had a number of vehicles that we were going to move in that direction. So that was one that we felt really confident about. We've also noticed that some of these electric vehicles have really come down in price compared to what they were sitting at. And uh we've been able to locate a location at Public Works to be able to have a charging station for uh two of these vehicles. And so that was one that kind of I'm not ticked boxes on getting this this funding and uh getting council to approve the funding in place for this deadline. Uh, the other one is that we had noted that, and again, in discussions with the ministry, it said, hey, we were looking at some uh aerial lifts that come in higher price. Uh, obviously, if you know them, some are electric, some are gas. And so they say, hey, we go to electric, and then again, that funding qualifies. So uh in doing the calculations, uh feel really confident with what I've suggested here. And we know that the vehicles uh will be here if uh if once council gives that approval, we can then uh move forward with that, and then we'll become part of our our five-year financial plan document when we do that. But having council's approval out of time is key. So um, having taken any questions, one thing that I think that we do need to recognize, uh especially as we've sort of shaped our our staffing, yes, we've got a few positions that we're still kind of working on, my main position. But it is something to consider, uh this funding that has been provided. So this again allows us to funds, get use the funds that are from twenty-two and twenty-three. They've now provided three-year funds, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. Uh, they can be used for staffing. That was one of the things that I was not aware of. And so that's something that um I think as a team, we need to look at, is there a position that we are already looking at that may have a um an additional role uh that could allow for some of that funding to um come over and and assist us, because we don't have someone that is currently you know, I would say dedicated to to looking into how uh what we do. And I would also really reiterate that Trail does a lot of really great things. We don't really communicate it maybe as well. When you think about even a ski recovery project, I think sometimes we get a kind of grab instead of coming from the city of Nelson every time we could, and every time we changed an LED light bulb, I think we had a, you know, a communication out in Nelson. Uh, we don't do that maybe as well as we should, but I think that having someone that uh to help steer us and to know that we can use some of the funding, I'm not saying all of it, but to use some of that funding in a position that we uh could consider overall that is necessary for the city, it uh again would allow us that funding uh that we've got this first um three years upfront is available and has to be spent by twenty twenty-eight. So again, to doesn't mean that we would spend it all in that uh particular role, but I think it would be really nice to have someone that's directing us on, hey, here's some places where where we're um, you know, whether it's some, you know, policies or or whatnot. We already, we already do good things. I, the staff already look at and how we're um functioning, whether it's for purchases of of um uh assets like vehicles and whatnot that we are looking at, you know, what's the most uh eco-friendly, but I think that we can do more. I think uh councils in the past and current and the community uh expects us also to have sort of a a plan.
Right. Any questions or comments for Mr. McQuaid? Uh, well, I think it's a great idea that we're moving ahead with electric vehicles. I think it falls into our green lens. Um, you know, uh, the way we want to move forward environmentally and to start this with two trucks right off the bat. That's great. That, so that would be three that we have now?
I've got, I think I've got hybrid. I'm not, I wasn't sure on that.
Oh, okay.
Yes, and uh, I mean, again, we were thinking potentially, um, I haven't talked to anyone by law, but by law might be one, if it tends to kind of stay in the area. And um, but that would be one, and then maybe use that truck and sort of again reallocate it to some other uh department that, you know, will use that.
So I have a question. You kind of touched on that, but the ticking of the boxes, do hybrids tick those boxes too?
They do. Yeah, that was my understanding. Uh, but I think the opportunity here, and especially when we're looking at pricing, that's one of the things that you're really noticing. Uh, and obviously, people tend to go with hybrid because they're just in concern. So here, trying to drive a cologne and all of a sudden, you know, I can't make it. The idea here is for these vehicles to be right here in Trail, be able to come home one night, get plugged into the charger, get ready to go the next day. So that is the, that's sort of where our mindset is.
Excellent.
Counselor Hanson.
Uh, and so this would take, as these were um units that were scheduled to be replaced then anyways, that we're gonna come out of our capital budget, we're able to use this grant funding instead to come out of our capital plan, so that allocates more funding for other.
Exactly. Yeah.
Um, and is anything taken into consideration? I mean, I know this is probably gonna sound silly, but with all of the batteries and, you know, cost of replacing batteries, has that been kind of factored in? Is there much more substantial on cost for replacing or fixing than a regular gas or hybrid? Is?
It's a great question. It is uh, we we do see, you know, the vehicles that are out there now. Uh, this this generation, I think, would be a two thousand twenty-four that we're looking at, kind of, and, you know, again, the new twenty-twenty-fives are coming up, but we certainly haven't seen anything that indicates that this has been an issue, I heard the vehicles that we were looking at. Is it a risk? Absolutely. Um, again, you would hope with a brand-new vehicle like that, there's a, my expectation is, is there some warranty going on with with, you know, purchasing that vehicle? But it is a foray into something that um will is unfamiliar. But I also know that uh as you noted, there's an expectation that um you will be able to purchase uh in, kind of, a custom-built engine in a number of years. It's actually not that far away. So I think us getting experience with them, getting educated, uh being able to see what their weaknesses and what their strengths are, and will help us. And uh, as you noted, this is some grant funding that had been sitting there, and not that we haven't could have allocated in all kinds of places, and maybe if we had a larger plan, that would be something that we would have done. But with this hard and fast date that came through, I'm confident that this gives us an opportunity with a low risk to take on some electric vehicles in our fleet, um learn from that, and certainly hope uh that there's no issues with the battery, and because they are brand-new, that we would have some warranty, because anything did happen in the in the in the near term.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I will move the uh recommendation. And the recommendation is that council authorize the purchase of two electric trucks, installation of an EV charging stations at the public works yard, and allocating the remaining local government climate action program funding towards the purchase of an electric man lift before March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Um, your worship, if I could make one edit if I'm allowed to, uh that that should have said uh the remaining twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Uh, just so that um we're clear that I'm uh not getting into funds that we just most recently dropped. So again, if I can, I know, uh, general manager, but am I allowed to make a amendment to that?
I I suggest, yes, we're in committee here. So it's fine, just um uh, can we just note that it says public works yard and allocating the remaining twenty-two and twenty twenty-three local government climate action program funding towards purchase of electric man lift.
Sorry, it should have been one other, yeah, funding, uh, sorry, it should have been twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Um, funding plus interest earned. And I also don't see the uh, the total there is two hundred thousand, two hundred eighty thousand, so few changes there that um.
Okay, I suggest that you read the motion.
Okay, I may, your worship, apologize, uh, your counsel. Uh, so the council authorized the purchase of two electric trucks, installation of EG charging stations at the public works yard, and allocating the remaining twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three local government climate action program funding and interest earned on those funds toward the purchase of an electric man lift before March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to a maximum of two hundred and three thousand dollars. And again, just so council's aware, in my report, you would have seen uh where I had noted the dollar mark for my interest center, so just so we're making sure that we're all on the same page.
So all the, I have a move on that, please, Counselor Butler, and all those in favor? That was Carrie. Thank you. I'll be signing amendments.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, school district number twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five scholarship program. And I will pass this report on to the manager of Legislative Services, Grace Lutini.
Thank you, your worship, through the chair. Um, the annual request for scholarships um for twenty twenty-five has been received from JL Crowe Secondary School. Uh, this is an annual request that you consider every January. Um, in twenty twenty-four, council of the, uh, you you guys decided to increase the amount of the scholarships um from six hundred and fifty dollars each to, for the Neil Poloney Memorial Scholarships, to one thousand and continue with the two um additional scholarships to JL Crowe in, and that was increased from two hundred and fifty dollars to five hundred dollars each. Um, those were created at the time of the pandemic, um, and they have continued to be approved since that time. Um, these scholarships recognize local high school students who not only achieve scholastic success, but who are also positively contributing to the community. So for you is a request for twenty twenty-five.
Thanks. Any questions or comments for Sandy? Okay, the recommendation is before you, and it is that council reaffirmed their support of the JL Crowe Secondary School and Cooperative Education Scholarship Programs through the provision of two one thousand dollar scholarships plus an additional two five hundred dollar scholarships to J Y Crowe Secondary School in twenty twenty-five. Counselor Wilson, I mean, all those in favor? Thank you. That was carried. And on to other reports. And the first one up is the Take a Hike Youth Mental Health Foundation Request Grant for uh five thousand dollars. And the recommendation is before you. Is there any comments on the Take a Hike Program before we move to the recommendation? Local students? No? Okay. The uh recommendation is that the application for a cash grant in the amount of five thousand dollars to the Take a Hike Youth Mental Health Foundation be approved. Uh, that was moved by Counselor Benson. All those in favor? That was Carrie. Thank you. I see no one here with questions there.
There's was one person online, your worship. We see one. There's a, there is. If you are in the waiting room, if you wish to ask a question, can you please use the raise hand function? I see no question.
Okay, thank you. So the next resolution is to rise from the committee at the whole, and that is that council consider and resolve to rise from the committee of the whole. I need a mover. Counselor Wilson, the seconder. Counselor Butler, all those in favor? That was Carrie. Thank you. And the next resolution is to exclude the public, recess the public meeting until six P M and immediately convene into a closed session. And the resolution is that pursuant to section ninety of the community charter and the public, but sorry, the public be excluded from this portion of the meeting as a subject matter being considered relates to the following. The Community Charter Section Ninety-One E Acquisition of Land and the Community Charter Section Ninety-One K Negotiations Relating to the Provision of a Min- uh Municipal Service. Uh. Now, do I have to do those separately?
The whole thing is a motion, yes.
And further that the public portion of the meeting be reset until till six P M. And further that council immediately resolve into a closed portion of the meeting. And this is Counselor Wilson, Counselor Hansen has seconded it. All those in favor? That was Carrie. Thank you.